Jan? All right. I am calling the meeting of the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education to order. Are there any requests for comments? All right, then we will adjourn to closed session. Welcome back to our meeting. We are going to reconvene to open session. I always jump right into it. I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Dot Theodore. My pronouns are she/her. Welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education meeting. This evening, we have Marshall Elementary presenting information about their school and activities. But before we get started, I will report out from closed session. In closed session, we approved an action to release a probationary teacher, employee number 9299, under Ed. Code 44929.21, for the 2223 school year. On a vote of 4-0, Trustee Kuziak made the motion, and Vice President Whitaker seconded the motion, and the motion was passed. All right, approval of the agenda.
Are there any amendments to it? I'll move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Jennifer, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will say yes. The agenda is approved. All right, mission statement. Trustee Howard.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff, utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board's agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request-to-speak form or via a Google form and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make a public comment. After the allotted time, you will be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed for each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the items presented. All right, we'll move on to the student board member report. Jennifer.
Hi, everyone. I hope you had a great Valentine's Day and President's Day off. All right, so CVHS is still in the middle of Sauce Pop, which again stands for Season of Service, Period of Peace. I believe that the middle school and high school DC trips are starting to be planned, which is great to see. I went on that trip myself in eighth grade, and I'm glad that it's happening again after two years of COVID. Senior nights for winter sports happened at the high school, and now spring sports are up and running. Our women's and men's varsity basketball team both went to NCS. Today, at lunch, actually, there were the preliminary elections for our next year's ASP and class officers, and the primary elections are going to be happening the second week of March. And super exciting, this Saturday, we're going to be having our winter ball at 7:00 PM. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the school report from Marshall Elementary.
Yeah, we welcome Ms. Ivana Rogers, who's going to, with her team, share with us about Marshall Elementary School. Welcome.
Don't be, it's just us.
So if I talk a little fast, I apologize in advance. So thank you Superintendent Amadi and the Board of Trustees for allowing us to share about Marshall Elementary School. I am Mrs. Rogers, the proud principal of Marshall Elementary School, and I am joined by Ms. McCullough and Ms. Brown. Marshall Elementary School is made up of a diverse student body with many different cultures. This school year, our Board presentation will focus on our Black History Month celebrations. Students learned and taught each other about many different Black Americans who have made an impact on our history and have helped to propel our society forward in many different facets. Ms. McCullough, Ms. Brown, and I will now share more about our celebrations with you.
I will represent kindergarten first. You can see here that throughout Black History Month, the kindergarten team, all the kindergarten students, read about important figures, Ruby Bridges to MLK. And this year, they also learned about the inventor Garrett Morgan. It's the spacebar.
Yeah.
I got that. All right. So Garrett Morgan, one of his contributions. He was an important African-American inventor, businessman, and community leader. And he's known for an early version of the traffic light and a smoke mask to protect firefighters. He was also involved in the civil and political advancement of African-Americans. So the students in kindergarten celebrated these accomplishments by recreating a version of the traffic light during our class. And as you can see here, good fun. And also from kindergarten, we have featuring one of our SEL A-Bar books here. Taking a step on from that, they created a handprint wreath showing a representation of all the beautiful skin colors in the classrooms. Look at their final product, the mural in one of the rooms now. And in our kindergarten through second-grade SDC class, they also learned about an inventor, Lewis Howard Latimer, who was known for improving the efficiency of the light bulb and having it work longer. So they created artwork and wrote about what they learned. They also took it personally and learned how to save electricity by turning lights off when they're not in the room. And some more examples of their work. In first grade, we studied a couple of different artists and poets. We did artwork inspired by the work of Alma Thomas. And I'll just diverge for a moment here and say that one of the nice things about studying Black History Month or celebrating Hispanic History Month, there are all these things that gives us as teachers an opportunity to learn things that we did not know. So as my students can tell you now, Alma Thomas was an art teacher for over 38 years, but she focused on her painting after she retired. And she had her first solo exhibition at the Whitney when she was 75. So there's second acts for all of us. But she has some really wonderful art. We also studied the poems of Langston Hughes. And another thing that I did not know until recently, he has poems that are focused on California because he was more well-traveled than I ever knew. And in second grade.
Hello, I'm Debbie Brown. I teach second grade. And we had a lot of fun with this month. We spent some time doing some close reading and avid strategies to learn about ragtime and jazz. And we learned about some of the early musicians from those genres. So we had a lot of fun with that. Each of our second-grade classrooms took one person from those genres, and we did more in-depth studying about them. And we wrote some biographies on those. So we focused on Scott Joplin, Ella Fitzgerald, and Louis Armstrong. And, oh my goodness, I have so many jazz songs going through my head. I'm constantly humming them now because with COVID restrictions, we have not been able to do a lot of singing, which we're used to doing. And so spending a lot of time just listening to these musicians was wonderful. We also incorporated some art. Kids had a lot of fun with that. And we listened to lots of different music. Then moving on to third grade, they also studied about Louis Armstrong and Ella Fitzgerald and some other jazz musicians. So their focus was mostly on jazz. And they also listened to a lot of songs, learned about some of their histories. And their art project was really cute. Then our third to fifth-grade SDC class, they did paper quilts of famous African-American performers. So you will see some of these same musicians that we studied, but they also had some more contemporary ones. We have Stevie Wonder here and some other ones. And so these are some examples of the artwork that they put together as they studied about these different musicians. We had a lot of fun this month. Okay, we're going to be moving on to fourth grade.
All right, so as part of their informational reading unit, fourth-grade students selected an important African-American they wanted to learn more about. They researched and took notes on their childhood and life, challenges they faced, why they are important, and interesting facts and quotes. Hold on, sorry. After researching, students decided how they wanted to share what they learned with their classmates. Some chose posters, People magazines, one-pagers, or electronic presentations. When all the projects were completed, the classes set up their project and did a museum walk so they could show off and read each other's work. This is just more of what their posters were like. And then fifth grade. So fifth-grade students briefly looked at the history of African-American music. Then students completed a research project on a selected musician, created posters, and gave an oral presentation, highlighting our musicians' accomplishments, successes, and contributions to the world, and enjoyed listening to samples of all the great music. I will say that I listened to lots of music when I went into different classrooms to see what they were doing and just if I was popping in to grab students or for whatever reason I was in the room. And it was very nice to hear. Just more work. All right, that concludes our presentation. I would like to end by saying thank you to the Board of Trustees and Superintendent Amadi for allowing us to present about Marshall Elementary School and all the wonderful things that we've done and learned and celebrated. And I would like to send a gracious thank you to the Marshall student, staff, and school community for being part of Marshall and making it so great. So as always, we say at Marshall, dream big, work hard, be strong, go Mustangs. Thank you.
We'll have some recognitions now, and then we'll bring you back up for some questions.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite Oliver Wu to join me. The governance team, along with Marshall Elementary School, are proud to honor Oliver Wu as their outstanding fifth-grade student. Oliver is just an all-around great student. He is a perfect blend of an extraordinary fifth-grade student as he is hardworking, inquisitive, empathetic, a little mischievous in the best way possible, and so funny. Oliver works not just to complete assignments, but he works for true understanding. He wants to thoroughly know the content on a deeper level. He works hard at being a good student and demonstrating the skills of being independent, driven, and taking initiative. He can always be counted on to be a leader in his class. Oliver is incredibly well-liked by his peers and all of the staff at Marshall. He cares about all students. An example is when he noticed a student getting hurt, he not only approached the student to make sure they're okay, even apologized on behalf of the other student who had made a mistake. He could have simply walked away from the situation as he really had nothing to do with it, but he didn't. That's just not the kind of person he is. He always has others' best interests at heart. That's why the entire Marshall family loves him so much. He's just a good human with a heart of gold. We are so proud to honor Oliver Wu tonight as being a great role model for all of Marshall students. We know he will continue to make us proud throughout his academic journey and beyond. The governance team joins Marshall Elementary School in honoring Oliver Wu as an outstanding student.
Congratulations, Oliver. Would you like to introduce anyone who came with you this evening? Well, thank you for being here.
Good evening. Is Dana here? Come on down. Welcome. The governance team, along with Marshall Elementary School, are proud to honor Dana Mikowski. She's been a valued member of Marshall Elementary School community for over 10 years. Over the past 10 years, Dana has dedicated much of her time to ensuring that many different Marshall events are held each year. Dana has been the driving force behind the Marshall Walkathon over the past few years. The Marshall Walkathon has been very successful even during the pandemic, and the event has raised money for Marshall's PTA to support students and staff. Previously, Dana was also involved in the Marshall Music Festival. I've heard a lot about that. It's pretty awesome. Well, hopefully you'll come back and help bring it back. The Marshall Music Festival was a fun event where a good time was had by all. Both of these events are beloved by the Marshall school community. Dana has volunteered at registration and the Marshall movie night. She's also held different roles on the PTA executive board over the past few years. She's been the PTA secretary in charge of PTA membership and PTA means and ways. Dana has also helped with various fundraising events, specifically the Olive Oil and Manera fundraiser. She's spent many hours over the years volunteering in different classrooms and supporting students and teachers at Marshall. So Marshall Elementary is very lucky to have Dana support so many different aspects of support for students, staff, and the Marshall community. So the governance team joins Marshall Elementary in honoring you, Dana Mikowski, for being an outstanding volunteer. Thank you very much. And go Mustangs. And is there anyone you'd like to invite up here to introduce or make a shout out to?
My husband, Mike, is here. And our three Marshall Mustangs are here. Started with Steven, who is now in 10th grade. Jonathan, who's in ninth grade. And Allison, who is talking about. We were lucky enough to have Ms. Brown and Ms. McCullough. And Ms. Rogers. It's been a wonderful community every year.
Thank you. Principal Rogers, can we ask you a few questions or make some comments?
Sure. And just so you know, Mr. Kuziak, yes, we have already asked her to come back to help with the Walkathon and all of our fundraisers. And she said, hmm, sure. So.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Principal Rogers?
Or would you like to?
Do you want to start, Jenny?
I'll just say congrats to both Oliver and Dana, and go Marshall.
So I was really excited to see that you sent her to February around Black History Month. And it's such an important message to really, it's acts like that to ensure that we understand that Black history is American history. It's our history. I saw hidden figures in your list of books there, and it made me think of my own experiences growing up in Virginia. It's a Virginia movie, in a Virginia book. It's about scientists in Virginia. And what really resonated with me when that came out a few years ago was how the women that are featured there were so close to, they could have been a teacher of mine. They could have been in my community growing up in Norfolk, Virginia. And I just think it's fantastic that we're bringing those type of historically-based books in our schools. I want to thank you for doing that. And whoever picked Stevie Wonder, one of my favorite songs of all time is "I Just Called to Say I Love You." It really makes me happy. So to the student who picked that, that's something that really inspired them. Thank you for that. Oliver, you have a really awesome name. My son is also an Oliver. And I really hope you continue to stay true in trying to understand and to help people. It seems like you do that very well. Please keep on doing that. We need you to do that. And Dana, you are a Mustang for life, clearly. And thank you for all of your contributions to the Marshall community and to our Castro Valley community.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I do have a few comments. And that is another great report from Marshall. So thank you very much for that. I really did like a lot of the things that you showed. I thought the collages were really beautiful in there. They look really very nice. And the handprints also were really, I like those a lot. We need to work on our logo. Maybe we could steal your handprints for our logo. And I think anybody who brings jazz back into the classroom, it's got to be fabulous. That's sort of sadly a dying art form and a really important one. So even if the kids don't quite get it now, I think maybe an inoculation now, they'll pick it up later maybe, and that'll be good. So also, congratulations to Oliver and Dana. Thank you for your work, Dana. And thank you for giving us such a great report. Enjoyed it.
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I love seeing how you integrated at different grade lovers, different diverse contributions of Black Americans throughout history. I think that was great. And the one thing that just I love so much was the quote, "Every shade is beautiful." Just sharing with kids and letting them understand, like, we are all beautiful by the way we come. I really appreciate the way that the school is doing that. Oliver, I have to say, it takes a lot of courage to stand up and help someone out and be there for them. And your empathy shines bright. Keep it up, it's going to do you well. And Dana, I have a question for you. Now that you're leaving Marshall, are you going to Creekside and Canyon to contribute as well there? To be determined. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your service.
I think a lot of times, I mean, we pass resolutions for Heritage Months and really important things that we should be covering. And this really was a beautiful example of what you have done with something that really, when the Board actually thinks about passing a resolution and acknowledging important things, this is our hope. It was absolutely beautiful. The artwork is awesome. You know, you just want to post it everywhere. And I think, I love how you have integrated all the different subjects. It's art, it's music, it's science, it's reading. And that's just wonderful. It's a great example. And you can see scaffolding, like what you do in kindergarten for second, third, fourth, fifth. But that's also the result of avid, strong school. They are a model for that kind of work. And I think you see the result. And of course, we're so fortunate to have amazing teachers and an awesome principal that we're lucky to have at Marshall. Congratulations, Oliver. I love how you really think about learning. But I also love the fact that he has fun. He's got a little, you know, everything is just, you know, you're learning, but you also have just a great personality, it seems like. And of course, you know, Dana, I know you said you would stay at, but I was thinking 10 years, so you've got another seven years. So that's 17. But thank you for doing what you do. And thank you for the gift of giving us the privilege to serve your three wonderful kids. Thank you.
I won't repeat all of the wonderful things that have been said about your school tonight, but thank you very much for coming and presenting and bringing such a wonderful story of the work that you're doing at your school. And congratulations to our two honorees tonight. You don't have any other staff here with you, right? Okay. So thank you very much. We are going to take a little break so that if you want to go home, you can. But you're more than welcome to stay. We've got some interesting things on the rest of the agenda, but you can take this moment to escape this awesome meeting. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, we will start back up our meeting with, is CSCA on the line? Okay, but I see Mark is. Hi, Mark.
There we go. Hi, guys. Good evening, everyone. I was disappointed that the school board breakfast was canceled. There were a lack of signups, which makes sense and is reflective of our times. I guess there were only 25 people that signed up, and we were five of them. So they had to cancel it. But I'm thankful that you all wanted to attend. And I did too. And I hope that the event next year is back in full force. I'm looking forward to it already. Our members continue to work hard to serve our students. We seem to be creeping back to more normal conditions, but the stress and the difficulty is still there. As mentioned at the last meeting, this is why it's really important to communicate and collaborate with staff if any changes are on the horizon. Even if things move a little slower than some folks would like, the results are better when everyone is informed. A good example of this is the committee that was set up months ago regarding the later start time at the high school. A group of staff and parents were assembled and today, today's schedules, schedule options were shared with the high school leadership council. Those schedules will also be shared with the high school staff, who will be able to share their perspective as well. My understanding is that the vote will, the staff will vote on a schedule, and I hope that that does happen and that the majority vote is honored. This process takes longer and is more difficult than making a top-down decision, but it allows folks to be informed and to buy in. So, you know, again, collaboration, collaboration, communication is very, very important. I'd also like to acknowledge the passing of two longtime amazing Castro Valley teachers. I haven't mentioned this earlier, and I feel bad, but Carol Kaplow passed away last month. CBUSD did a great job supporting the staff at CVE and acknowledging just her amazing work with students for so many years. And over the weekend, retired teacher Peter Brewer, who taught at CBHS for decades and who coached generations of cross-country and track and field athletes, passed away unexpectedly. They were both wonderful, dedicated teachers and colleagues. Teachers have an influence that it really is immeasurable. And Carol and Peter made an impact on so many students and families, and they will be missed. Thank you, Board, for the difficult work that you do. It is appreciated. And I hope everyone has a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, Amy, do we have any comments for, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? All right, Jennifer, your preferential vote, please. Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will say yes. So the motion is passed 4-0. And I also wanted to acknowledge that Dolly is absent today as she's out of town. All right, so we'll move on to reports, discussion, and action items.
So my update is next. There we go. COVID-19 updates. There's some information on where we are with vaccination and things like that. 82.5% Alameda County, almost 60% of 5- to 11-year-olds are now fully vaccinated and will continue to encourage that. 83.9%, 84% fully vaccinated in Castro Valley. Alameda County, the level that we have is now moderate community transmission per CDC. Only unvaccinated persons are required to wear masks in all indoor public settings after February 16th. This is for adults. That's no, I mean, for the community, but no changes to K-12 masking at this time. But we are expecting changes to masking coming soon. Fully vaccinated individuals are recommended to continue indoor masking when they, you know, the risk may be high. But February 28th, we are expecting an announcement regarding masking in schools. And we're hearing that a couple of weeks or so after that would be the timeline, based on CDPH and Alameda County Public, Department of Public Health guidelines and requirements. And just a few things, I'm sure people have seen the Governor Newsom's announced SMARTER Plan. I think it's an acronym for something, which is right here. Shots, Masks, Awareness, Readiness, Testing, Education, and Therapeutics. So that's the, really the information that they shared in public, talking about the capacity to make sure that we can administer at least 200,000 vaccines per day on top of existing pharmacies and provider infrastructure. Masks, having that available awareness and people just knowing, you know, how do you get information? Where do you go for different things? And readiness, surveillance, and surge staffing. So just knowing that this COVID is going to stay with us and be a part of our lives and be endemic, to kind of make sure that we have all the things that we should have in place as far as surveillance, knowing that, you know, at times, we will have surges and we will act accordingly. Testing, having that available, maintaining not only what you can do outside, but also for, you know, for schools and different ways of people having access to testing. And then, of course, education, expand vaccination rates among kids. That's a huge piece that we will continue to encourage everyone. And of course, you know, there are therapeutics that are now available and really working on improving those kinds of things.
Arine?
Yes.
With regard to the Governor's SMARTER Plan, are we getting any word about permanent budget augmentations to support ongoing readiness at all?
Yeah, that's a great question. I am not hearing, neither Suzie or I have heard anything about that moving forward. We'll see what happens. But the budget did not include any of that. Good question. This is our case rate. So as you see, we're, you know, we're declining in the number of cases. It's been great. We still have testing available. And from February 7th to the 18th, we tested 1,146 people. So this is through the mobile testing units that are at Adobe. We haven't had too many people at Adobe at all. And this is the antigen testing schedule, 4 to 28 to 3, 4. So you can see, for example, Monday, Independent, and then Tuesday, it's Redwood, Palomar, and CVE, and then Wednesday, moving forward, so that we can do this every, you know, it's like weekly. And of course, we have, you know, the Adobe and as well as CFA. Other district updates, yes?
Sorry, with regard to the testing?
No, no.
I was just curious, have we kind of stabilized with overall demand for it? Are we in a place where we might be able to offer community access again? Or do we need to still?
You mean through CFA?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
It's great to hear. Okay, thank you.
That is available to the community. But the Adobe and the mobile is for students and staff. Other district updates, so this is just, you know, information enrollment is open for transitional kindergarten and kindergarten students. Priority enrollment period closes March 3rd. Students turning five years of age prior to September 2nd get to be eligible for kindergarten. And students turning five years of age between September 2nd and February 2nd now are eligible for TK. So this is the expansion. Enrollment is open on going for all new students in every grade level, starting March 13. And then for current 5th grade students, the application window for 6th grade placement closes March 3rd. Because if you are thinking about having your child at Creekside, there will be a lottery for placement, based on the numbers we have. And that happens on March 10. And just on our website, under enrollment, there's a ton of information for everybody. And then, of course, we're excited about our Spanish dual language immersion. For next school year, we will be offering to TK and kindergarten. And program location is at Vanoy Elementary School, Principal Delatorre. And then program enrollment questions that anybody has, you can call our district office. You also, people can also reach out to Ms. Garcia, our bilingual tosa, teacher on assignment, or Ms. Nodau, our parent community liaison. But we are still, you know, getting information out in English and Spanish to reach out to as many people as we can. And just a quick step-by-step. So parents enroll their students in their regular homeschool. And then interested parents who want their children to be in Spanish dual immersion can then, you know, complete a separate form. And then there is an assessment of language proficiency for students who first, whose first language is Spanish. And then, of course, you know, that's the timeline. In February, if more students apply, then there is space. We will then conduct a random lottery similar to the one we do for Creekside. And kind of the list is interested students who are Vanoy siblings, then CBUSD students, and then students from outside of CBUSD. Yep.
Thanks for that bullet point about interested students who are Vanoy siblings. So basically, unlike all of our other elementary schools, this program is available to the entire district.
Yes.
But once you're in, there's sort of a family reunion provision that allows that.
Yes.
But you do not have to be in the Vanoy attended zone to be able to apply for this.
Absolutely. Acceptance and waitlist communication is sent to families in February and March. And then orientation will be in April and April, May of 2022. And then I wanted to just congratulate Jennifer Me. She did a great job. She did a phenomenal job. I was at Rotary when she did her, gave her speech. She was just amazing. And there were six students, five from Redwood Christian and one from Castro Valley High School. And Jennifer came, is number one. Now she has to do her speech again at the regional. So congratulations to you. Great job. And then Spring for Education, CVF, Castro Valley Ed Foundation, April 22. It's going to be exciting. It'll be at Adobe Center. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And they only have 150 tickets. So once they start selling them on March 1st, make sure you get your ticket. They're celebrating CBUSD community with specialty drinks and food from local eateries. And then auction, raising funds for program materials for wellness centers across the USG schools. So it benefits our students. And then they would love to have volunteers. If you would like to volunteer, you just go to info@cvf.org. We're excited about this event. So save the date. Wait for March 1st and buy your tickets. And that's my report.
Are there any questions?
I really liked your clip art this week. The emojis were really cool. Thank you.
Ms. Claire finds the best ones, because mine would be all plain.
All right, we will move on to the personnel. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
I just had a clarifying question. So the COVID dashboard that's on the district website, the numbers that are like updated daily, is that the numbers of, for example, like, if it says like 16 cases, does that mean there's 16 cases in the whole month of February, like so far? Or is it like today's count? Like active count?
It's for, so when you see it says February, so if you look, it's like each one, each school? Is that what you're asking about?
No, I mean, like, if it says 16 cases, does that mean there's 16 active cases?
No, no.
Or doesn't it mean there's been a total of 16 cases in the month of February?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check.
And we started with like 80 when we came back. And now we're down to like three or five. So it's been great. Yeah. Good question.
Feels good to be on the backside of the surge now. All right, we'll move on to the personnel report.
I'll move approval of the personnel report.
I'll second it.
All right. Are there any questions? All right, Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will also say yes. So the personnel report has been approved. On to item C, LCAP updates.
Okay, everyone's favorite time of the meeting. This year, we're fortunate enough, we not only have our regular LCAP presentation, but we get two. In fact, three, if you count us coming back again at our next meeting to actually hopefully approve the mid-year update on the LCAP. So what's new with this new process is partly due to the additional funding that we've gotten. And they want to make sure that we've done community engagement. We were, as a district, one of the things that we did this year, though, is we held meetings in which we separated out all of the different funding sources. Even though they're individual, separate presentations, we gave them at one time. So that helped us to avoid having to go back, for example, and take six meetings of our D-LAC and take all that time away. But we actually did a good job in terms of communicating and working with them. But basically, these are the pieces that need to be presented that I'll be sharing. One is an overview of the template, the budget overview, which Ms. Chan actually created, the mid-year outcome data, which, most of which we actually reviewed at our last meeting with our CASP data. And then the expenditure and implementation data is also a part of the mid-year report. So on the template, and there's a hyperlink to the annual update, the actual document, if you ever care to look at the entirety of it, it's not a huge document. It's only, you know, 80 to 100 pages long. But it's much shorter than the actual LCAP. So the five categories, the five pieces that are in, in the LCAP supplement are what we did, talking about what we did in terms of engaging the community. The second section is on concentration grant funds, which we don't receive. Those are funds for districts that are 55% or more free and reduced lunch, have students with 50, 55% or more of the students receive a free or reduced lunch. Section three, specifically engagement, looking at one-time federal funds as opposed to the state funds that we got. Section four is looking at our successes and challenges. So for example, things like staffing, which we know were a particular challenge in terms of expending some of those funds. And then finally, how we're using our resources and how that's aligned with our LCAP. So the budget overview, Amy, would you mind clicking on this hyperlink just so we can show?
Excellent.
So this is the budget overview that Suzie created. It's actually a great document. So if you think about what we've always wanted is kind of a compact way, look at the LCAP and expenditures. If you scroll down this a little bit, you can see, you can see the basics in terms of what's been spent. And you can see some responses in terms of how the money was spent and how it aligns with the LCAP. I don't know, Suzie, if you wanted to add anything more? Budget overview? Okay, cool. Thank you, Amy. And then also, as we discussed before at our last meeting, our mid-year outcome data in terms of performance on state mandated assessments and our internal assessments also. We actually were pleasantly surprised that the learning loss was not as profound as we expected it to be. So there are still performance gaps, as we knew before. Also, student engagement and social emotional supports continue to be high needs areas. The investment that we've made years back in the wellness centers and social workers, elementary counselors, et cetera, are needed more now than at any time. And so it's wise that not only do And so it's wise that not only did we do that, but we're continuing it and actually strengthening those supports. The expenditure and implementation data, as we discussed before, most of the funding for the dollars that we got was either spent on safety equipment, materials, and staffing, things directly responding to COVID, helping to support the learning environment. But it's also aligned with the LCAP, right? So if the four sections of the LCAP being looking at academic and college career readiness, the learning environment, parent engagement, and student engagement. Those all were impacted also by the, both the one-time federal dollars as well as the additional funding sources that we received this year. So this presentation is, and actually the actual LCAP mid-year report is not submitted to ACOE at this time. It must be presented now, and it must be approved prior to the end of March. However, it doesn't have to be sent to the county until the end of the year. This will be turned in as an addendum to our actual LCAP. Also, this year, as I mentioned before, we will be coming back with the 22, 23 LCAP as well. This is an overview, I won't go into the details, but this is an overview of what needs to happen with the LCAP process this year. So there are some additional steps, but that's fine, because it came with additional funding. So we'll take that anytime we can get it. And with that, the final piece is next, at our next board meeting, the mid-year report will come back for your approval. If you have any questions between, either tonight or between now and then, feel free to reach out, and I'm happy to respond to any of those.
I was going to say, there was a picture on the first or second slide of there. That's our preschool. I just love our preschool. Such a great program. They're doing an amazing job.
It's pre-COVID, clearly.
Pre-COVID, no, no masks at that time, but they're just adorable.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you, everyone.
Any questions, comments? Mike?
I just want to make a compliment. I really appreciate your attempts to provide that parent overview of the budget. If I've learned anything in the past year that I've been here, is like, I don't think the state of California makes it really easy for our budget information to be understood by anyone, even board members. So I thank you for your efforts and endeavoring to make it easier for the public, because accountability is important, and being able to understand what that information is is important. So thank you for your continued efforts there.
Thank you.
I wanted to say, I can't remember what year LCAP started, but I remember how bumpy and awkward it was talking about how we would do this. And now it's so smooth, and you have this really concise, wonderful presentation, so thank you very much. All right, item 10, superintendent's report.
Just a few, just a few things. Let's see, we visited actually with you as well as Trustee Howard. We went to Logan High School to visit their clinic, it was great. And with Ms. Chan and Ms. Sharon Drew-Quince and Marion Meadows. We went to Vanoy, Vanoy in Palomar's PTA. I did attend a poetry event at Canyon, it's always absolutely amazing. The students were phenomenal. They also had a wonderful poet who agreed like last minute to present, and he was great. But the students and the parents were there, we had about 150 parents. And I love how Canyon staff had it just so organized and wonderful. Everybody came in, they all sat down, had a great time. We were at the Rotary, where we also heard Jennifer speak. We had our parent leadership council. It's great to have one person from every school at least attend, and it was great. We had just one missing who was not feeling well. And then I just visited Palomar's and Independent. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anything you wanted to add? Jennifer, your report?
Sorry to have been stated, but I did participate in the Rotary speech contest. It was a great experience. Honestly, I signed up for it kind of last minute, and I just did it like on a whim for fun. I did a speech contest for fun and I won, so that was pretty, pretty cool. But yeah, honestly, I loved meeting their Redwood students. It was interesting, like talking to people from a different school and how their school worked. But yeah, now I have to give the speech again in about a few weeks, so.
That's awesome. I don't think I would ever volunteer to speak in public. Congratulations. Mike?
As Parvi mentioned, we hung out with Vanoy Elementary School. It's really great to see all those parents engaged with their school community. I encourage all parents to be engaged with their school community, their parents and guardians out there. We also went to the special, I went to the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, and what a wonderful opportunity to meet our new director for special education. Also, although he's not really new, he's been here for a while now, or a few months. And I really enjoyed hearing the parents and seeing that they had a voice and that they can participate. And I want to thank the district for making that happen. On a personal note, I just, I want to acknowledge tomorrow would have been my mom's birthday. And I just, for me, I need to acknowledge that. And I know the last two years have been really rough for a lot of people and in our school communities, our teachers, our staff, the people in this room. And I want to thank everyone for just being there for everyone and helping them. And I just, I hope we can just spend a little more time being a little bit nicer to everyone, have a little bit more empathy for everyone. That's all. Thank you.
I think the items that I have been participating in have already been mentioned, pretty much, for the visit to James Logan High School to see their clinic down there. That was very encouraging, and I think we're all hopeful that that might work out for us. I was also in the DEI planning meeting. And the thing that I think is really impressive there is they're working on the secondary piece of that, so that we can continue, once we get our kids out of elementary school in the immersion, that it'll continue through middle school and high school. That's very impressive, I think. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Last night, I was lucky enough to attend my first district wellness council meeting with Dr. Reiman and President Theodore. And it was really nice, you know, I've never been on that council before, and to work with students and parents on goals, hearing their experiences was very enriching for me, and I'm really glad to be on that council. Thank you both for allowing me to be on that council this year. I will be at the CV Community Alliance tomorrow with President Theodore as well. And then the following week, I will be with Gary and Superintendent Amadi at the CBUSD Ambassador Tour at Creekside.
Thank you. So everything that I have attended has already been mentioned. The visit to Logan, the Wellness Council, tomorrow's Community Alliance meeting. But I will also be attending the Creekside PTC meeting tomorrow. And last week, I was able to speak to the Youth Organize Unite Club about health and healthcare in Alameda County. So that was great to have a conversation with high schoolers that were really engaged and interested about, you know, health in our county. And that's it. All right, meeting adjourned.